Okay, first I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order Tuesday, July 6th, 2021, 7:00 PM. This is both held in person and virtual. The session is being both video and audio recorded. Board members and staff who are virtually are joining virtually will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting, or will generally be keeping and will generally be keeping a video of themselves on for all meetings. If a member of the public joining virtually creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff or for a selectmen input should have been in at public input@columbiact.org in 24 hours of the meeting. And if you are attending virtually or in public and making your comment, you can do so here or through the chat. But in any respect, you should include both your name and address. And now I'd like to stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I make a motion we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any discussion? Comments? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Both. Thank you. Approve lovely minutes for the Board of Selectmen regular meeting of June 15th, 2021. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. abstain. abstain. We have someone here, audience citizen? Nothing, thank you. Anybody in the chat?
No, sir. And we did not have any public.
Great, thank you. Full business. Approval of the proposed charter amendments final report. So we sent it back with a change that we would like for fiscal manager to finance director. The charter has.
They approved that change and sent it back to us.
Great. So now I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the proposed charter amendments set forth in the final report of the charter revision dated June 25th, 2021. We will then move to send it to a referendum. So any comments? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Both. Thank you. Approval to send the question to the electors of town of Columbia to be voted on November 2nd, Election Day, 2021, regular election. I move that the Board of Selectmen sends the following questions to the electors of the town of Columbia to be voted on November 2nd, 2021. And the question will be, shall the proposed revised charter be approved? Any discussion?
Are we all set to go forward as far as this thing is concerned?
Yes. That was in a special implemented and it gave us.
Anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Both. Thank you. Good business. You see here that they would like to Millie Ramsey brought to us dedicating a garden down at the public beach on our P. New Matt which required approval of Board Selectmen. So if you read this, I guess.
You've already done that a while back.
Yeah.
And then what this is now the actual dedication will be Monday, July 26th, 2021. And what we're looking for is the approval on the back of sheet one. The what will be on the plaque will be mounted to a stone in the garden.
Move that we approve the language as presented. That's if we can't do it, it can't be done.
That's his quote.
He always said that?
Yeah, and that was in his proclamation of Pete New Matt Day. Andy.
Did you ever check for Mark?
I have to find it. I was trying to find it for you. I'll look for you.
Please.
There's no.
No, no, check for Millie. Millie wanted to see.
Any comments? Motion on the floor or both in favor? Aye. Both. Thank you. So we business just for new business. We are actually now on Columbia Lake. We have an application to yes. I make a motion that we approve the application to install a new morgue for Michael Boyle and Lauree or Quartz O of 82 Route 87. I look here, Lake Management Advisory Committee says, no problem. We could put a morgue anytime. Let me do this morning for an offshore structure. That's on the guidelines we ordered out last year. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Both. Thank you. Appointments and resignations. The appointment of Katie Wilk, the Youth Services Committee in the capacity of the community service, social services coordinator. Know about this?
I do know.
Want to pick up a little bit?
Yeah, nothing but good feedback on Katie and she's been attending a lot of the Youth Services Committee meetings. I think she'd be a great addition to the committee. I move that she can be appointed to Youth Services.
Very good. So a motion to appoint her as a community social services coordinator for the Youth Services Committee. Wonderful. Any other discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Both. Thank you.
American Rescue Plan update. I had a chance to talk to Congressman Courtney for you and spoke the challenges small towns have is that we really can't use that money in operational needs. It has to be more capital. And he said, I understand that. He said luckily, we were very generous in how long we have to figure out a plan for that. And he said to get any of the ideas you want to his office and or CCM. CCM is lobbying with the United States Treasury Office to make this work for small towns too and obviously cities. So I just, I'll keep giving updates as we learn more, but right now we're still in the dark. Except for some big rules that they would like us to do. On the airline trifold, I just want to thank why this was due to a grant we had from the DEP, the 12 towns airline grant we received. It was also made possible through a generous donation from the Maine Moose. And with Steven Edwards' help and Jen LeBoy's help. And really, it's a great concept because you'll notice on the map, there's QR codes. And they also, the codes link now, Jen put each code right into the website. So it'll take you to our website. And if you're looking for a restaurant, hit the code, it'll jump to the restaurant page on the website. It tells every restaurant company and the menus and everything you would want to know. Or to the trails, it goes for our access map of where you park and what trails are available in Columbia. And to attractions, it goes to all the main attractions in Columbia. So it's pretty in which a lot of the towns all did this all the way from Thompson to and then next I had to run around and put up the key locations in Columbia.
So not only in Columbia, if you know a place that may be along the airline trail, we just don't want to have people in Columbia go to the airline. We'd like people who are coming from other towns and are riding a bike from Andover or Bolton or Colchester or Wyndham, Chaplain, whatever, you know, let them know, plan their day. We're going to ride our bike. And oh, by the way, we're going to stop at this place, at this place. That's what it's for. Not just Columbia residents. And then hopefully they turn and get some of their groceries.
Next, just want to give you an update on the Hop River State Park Trail, State Project 30-97, which is widening culvert and replacing a small footbridge into another culvert filled over with dirt. And then finally, a walk-in bridge for bicycles and hikers on the Hop River Trail. Through research, because this was supposed to have been in our, started earlier, we found out that SHPO got involved, which is the state historic preservation office, that there might be some historic importance along this area where they're going to be doing renovation. And all it basically said was that, go ahead, we've done all the photography, we've done the archiving and just try not to disturb the historic bridge abutments as much as possible. But what that did was delay this project two years. So final design will not be now until 2022. And then it'll, it'll take a year and a half to do final design. So that'll be advertised in 2023. And they'll actually do construction during 2023. So we're really pushed out. Steve and I see if we can move this along any quicker, but I don't know if that would be possible. It's just unfortunate. With DEP and SHPO involved, the projects tend to get really late. So I just wanted to be all updated. And that's all I have to.
Very good. There's a couple items correspondence in there. You'll look them for yourself. That's good. There is our monthly newsletter right here. Thank you again. And a lot of conferences electronically. That's good. And now we have some financials transfers.
There's so many because this is the year end of adjusting all the accounts and any cap that was even $25 short.
I think I'm going to go through them and then we can, I'll make a motion to approve. We can talk to just like the one she has a question about. So the first $101, that's from cover the cost of zoom license. After the license for staff of after. After.
After license. It's licensing, but zoom, we needed another zoom license.
$42 history place to cover the cost for phone services. $110 cover above budget for registered voter supplies. Ordinarily here. $32 cover the cost for Stanford World. 411 cover the unbudgeted cost to transition to Tom's words, laser fish files from a bailing server to the cloud. Who owned the bailing server?
What was the information that went to the cloud as opposed to being?
Well, they were about to retire the service, so they had to expedite laser fishing, laser fish. Now they couldn't wait till the next election season. So we need a transfer if it wasn't budget.
The next is $500 to cover the cost of outside, outside of the budget to purchase an outdoor bench for the seniors there. It's above $500. I need some. $216 to cover the budget for oiling the senior center. $4,858 in late management services to cover the cost outside of the budget for mooring inspection services repairs. Yeah. $2,210 for recovery above budget for Willie Ways paper company. Town is no longer receiving transfers simultaneously in cycle. We just can reduce the possible ways. Like that, see if we did anything in our upcoming budgets. So we don't have this again. No, no, one more. $288 cover above budget for electricity at Murphy House. It's been increased using the Parks and Parks Department, social services being housed in that.
Is this $5,100?
Cover the above cost in the relevant salary training new agent as well as for additional work required by the new management. Transfers have funds to get to the end of this one year. $5,000. Yeah, let's start from the beginning. $5,000. All right. Moring inspection services. It's a matter of what happened with our moorings.
So originally, we had a dive that was retired. It used to work with George Murphy. And two years in a row, we've had a boat break off from mooring and go adrift. Nothing's ever happened. The boat was recovered. Now the mooring was repaired.
Yeah.
We felt it'd be prudent to actually once again, do an inspection of all the moorings. So we found a dive company that was recommended to us that does this for lip, so they do the inspect moor fields. And we hired them. The original inspection cost $1,350. And we subsequently found out and they took photographs of all the moorings and the hardware that our moorings were in danger of the 14 moorings. 13 of them are in danger. So we bought all new hardware and chains. And then the dive company came back and replaced them all. And we have pictures of how rusted and. We don't. Yeah. So what we'll do is I think from now on, I think every other year, we'll have an inspection, make sure they're all set. And this dive company also inspected under our peer and uncovered some things that we're looking into right now. Our big Smith here, which I'll explain later. Once, once I, once we figure it out.
Okay.
Because that's a couple of years old.
The Willie Ways for $2,200, $2,210. Did we know that before we put the town budget together that we passed? For this upcoming year, one we're in now?
Yes. So we have an increase in the waste and this was due to, we no longer really get paid for recycling.
Now, do they not recycle anymore?
No, they're still recycling. We just don't get paid for it because they're not making money.
And $5,100.
So John has been working. He worked extra hours while we were training our previous public wetlands agent. And then it's been very busy in our building department. So he hasn't been holding to standard 10 hours a week. It's been going over that. And we waited until we got to the end of the year to see how much we were going to need. And that's a lot to care out to. We have interviews being set up for either this week or early next week. There are two candidates. Yes.
Yeah.
Because it's only 20 hours a week. It's not a full-time job. So it's it's top of mind. We have to be highly educated and not above.
And John. Yeah, but it's not like there's lots of places where they have a kind of job position.
Correct. So many inland wetlands agents came to small towns, like John used to handle for town.
Right.
And then he retired, retired, retired and all this left work. He did Columbia for 30 years. And now he wants to retire.
Yes, doesn't want to do it anymore.
So I make a motion we approve the amount of $13,868 transfers respected by listed and reviewed. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Both. Thank you. Make a motion we pay bills in the amount of $290,588 and 25 cents.
What's the portable radios?
We're getting those with our emergency manager grant. And that was, we've looked into the radios. It was approved by Jared James in the fire department. So we upgraded some of those emergency vehicles.
Power washer and that.
Yes, that's an engine decreasing power.
Are we done with the basic cleaning? Do we know?
I don't know if we complete.
$1,500 on docking stations?
Yes. So what we've done due to the pandemic now, because people have needed to use their computers at home here, we're switching to now docking stations. So the computer you use to run your desk is the same station, the same computer you would take home. You would just dock it and it would go right to this room. So it's, it's what towns are all transitioning.
My docking site.
It's, it's just a connector. You're connecting this actual laptop to your server.
Is it more secure? Is that why we're doing it?
Well, it's a better way to use the exact same computer to get into your system the same as you would do at work. And so you don't have extra laptops just hanging around waiting for the occasional use. This.
So they're taking their laptops home like in a brief, like a briefcase or something.
I know. But we are proving secure.
But they are working on the same server here.
Right. It's as if they're sitting at their desk. Nothing's different.
So people are still working from home.
But yes. But a lot less.
Should we import it? We bought a bench for $1,000?
Yes, it got snow plowed by accidents.
Oh, it does.
Yes. And the seniors like to sit on the bench while they're waiting for the bus.
So we have two new benches up there?
No, that's the bench. So we bought one.
Of which we transferred 1,000 and covered, or 500 to cover the 1,000.
Right. Because Bernadette had happened. It's a big bench, the whole bus.
It was unoccupied at the time of the strike.
Yes. It was a cloud. Yes, and occupied as a bunch of other ways.
Yeah, I'll see if you know.
Our health insurance, that's something for lots.
How the trees do.
We're busy. We're getting, we're still getting phone calls of people that say, come look at this tree in my, it needs a town tree. It's dead. Don't get it. We are doing better. We're, we're negotiating more. We'll see up with Ersour's. And they're helping more than in the past. They got trees. So we're working as a team.
Well, I gotta tell you, we're doing a way better job. I'm loving it. It's kind of nerve wracking to drive down these. Oh, yeah.
So the replacement of the damaged solar power lamp, the one that fell.
Right.
We replaced it for $315?
Yes.
Okay. And we're putting it up there?
That was before we analyzed that. Before we analyzed, like, we ordered it right away to replace it.
We should analyze and remember. And the fencing up there? Is that the area here?
Yes, that is.
All right. Any more discussion on the bills?
Jen just said the volume just went down. Never mind. I didn't hear you down. Okay.
Nope, I'm good. Sorry.
Okay.
Who was the first aid station for? Or what is it for? Joel Swinsey?
Joel just ordered it.
Is that for the lake? Is that for where? Because there was no explanation.
It doesn't mean about, but it it might be in the maintenance garage. As my guess is, there was nothing. Or if there was, it was probably there.
Sometimes it should replace it and call units and try to replace the pieces. Replacing the pieces is very, it's very.
Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Both. Thank you. Audience and citizens. So nothing sparkling here you'd like to bring up?
This is.
Obviously, Y'all never sent a letter. So go ahead and tell me.
So recently at the Republican Town Committee meeting, I was nominated to serve in the vacant Board of Education. See, I'm sorry, Rachel Ried, 310, Route 66. I was nominated to serve in Chris Lunt's seat for the Board of Ed. And I just wanted to let you know a little bit about me. The letter was apparently not sent. So I don't know what that means.
Yeah, it was supposed to say that. She didn't send. So sorry about that.
Um, but I am an educator. I've been doctorate in education, curriculum and instruction. We've lived in town for five years and for a little while there, I feel like I was the only non-board member that was attending all of the meetings until they went to Zoom. So very much interested in serving the town, particularly in the education capacity.
Fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will have to get a letter and we will not, you know, ask just to vote to appoint him to, right?
Yes, that'll happen on the 20th. And I don't think you'd have to come back again if you didn't want.
I think.
I think, I think it has to be approved by the board.
I also thank the Republican Town Committee for taking her word for it. I mean, I'd love to. I mean, sooner the better. I think we need an official letter from the Republican Town Committee.
No, I'll be sure of it. Maybe next weekend, next week. They keep changing the date on it. So
That's right. Because it was supposed to be this Monday.
Yes.
Yes, it right.
They may be changing.
Well, we, if we get that letter, we can, we can pass it July 20th.
Well, since we met, we can actually powerfully. Thank you. Welcome. Board member comments?
The parade was a blast.
I know. I had some.
The whole town had a blast. It was cool.
There's a lot of people.
It was just a blast.
It was wonderful to see everybody smiling, hanging out together like they're supposed to.
Yes.
No, it was on Channel 3 News. Fox 61, the parade.
Did they get some good footage?
I, people called me and said, oh, I saw it. They said, my shit's a lot. I saw you on Fox 61.
I must say about a slow news day.
People just want something happy.
I know.
So it was just a good time.
It was fun watching with you guys.
Fun with water.
Very nice. Yeah, that's fun.
Yep.
I learned believing this part a lot, never go right. Always go left. I, I thought it'd be clear. I got stuck. It got backed up past the beach. It was like just solid, not a movement.
Yeah, it did take a while.
But that light was all backed up. So I figured, oh, it'll be, it'll be clear.
What was really funny is we were coming up 66 and all the fire trucks from the towns were like running sirens to get to Old Mannequin Town, I assume, because there was down after down with the sirens.
Well, their parade was yesterday. It was Sunday.
It was new.
It was Monday.
No, no, no. It was at Sunday.
It was Sunday.
Oh, they did it on Sunday.
Yeah. Yeah. The Boobot's parade was Sunday.
I don't know why, but several of the towns were running sirens.
Oh, they were just. Playing.
No, it was funny.
I'm sure they don't run their sirens.
And then you made most for providing half of the entertainment.
You know, it wasn't half. It was, it was sizable and soft. But to be honest with you, um, it really worked out well. It wasn't like I really didn't see it slammed in your face like, but.
Well, they had a lot of kids who were working there and they were all on all the trails. And they were just having a good time.
Yeah. That's what was whupping me. The bands were, the, I thought there were one or two more marching bands, ball, but they were good. And, uh.
It was awesome.
So it really was very, very.
The little guys, that was little.
China.
Those are cool. I think it'd be cool.
They almost crashed in front of me.
Uh-oh.
One guy was not too bad. All right. I guess that's enough comments. Anybody else?
Just need a quick, a quick, a special.
Real safe person.
Uh, just wanted to update, update as far as the four-wheelers on the three thousand road in the other strip.
You know what?
Address.
You gave me the address and I have not forwarded that to the state trooper. So that's, that's for, for Robert. Okay.
So I, I will tell you, Rob, that in my backyard. I'm going. What, what is that? Because Roberts is right in back of my head. And I went out there and there were people on their quads. And I, um, I made mention to a young man that I know. And I said, listen, if you have any friends that are riding quads back there, let them know that they better have permission or because by the, you know, it's private property. So you got on the phone and made a text right away. Have you seen anything going on here lately?
Only it's only if they're still racing up and down a thousand road.
So the road is not private property?
Well, they're not supposed to be on the road.
Yes, they're not.
It's been actively.
And I guess you know, you talked to Walt Paper, they're over his field too.
Yeah, because they were, they were in back of me. He is Walt Paper's property. And that's why I said it's not, it's private property. So Walt wasn't there. In fact, Walt's a little fun about the address. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I would, he basically went to the house and was, oh, it wasn't my kids. And the kid was riding that formula. It was in her yard. Well, we should. So, okay. All right. So at this time, I'm going to suspend the town, the board's second meeting and move into executive session. We stopped the recording. We'll ask our guests.
This is seven thirty-three.
Thanks, Ray. Sorry about that. That's great. Thank you.
Nice meeting you, Agent.
Medium, you have.
And it's eight twenty-three. We've came out of executive session.
You're in person, push you to the address.
Oh, jeez, going back into the other session.
I just want.
Coming out of executive session at eight twenty-five.
Okay. So with that said and done, there's nothing we have to take further action on. So I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Want to hang out or anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.